Good evening, everybody, and welcome, everybody here tonight and at home watching from home. It is with great pleasure and privilege that I sit here on this Wednesday, August 9th, and the time is approximately 6:31, and we will call this meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation by Pastor Domingo Vela from Templo del Liberatio, and then followed by Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Elida Garza.
Ladies and gentlemen, Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you have given us to come together this afternoon. We ask for your guidance. We pray that you will give wisdom to the City Council, Father, to that they can solve the problem that we are facing. Father, I pray that they, together, they will come in unity. Father, for the better of the community, I ask you this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thomas moving off the stage.
Thank you. Well, now I'll go to Agenda Item Number Two, Citizen Comments. A citizen who has a request for city services or other items of concern which cannot be approved or otherwise resolved by the city manager may choose to address the council. Citizens who wish to address the city council about items on the agenda will have three minutes to express their position. Please indicate the Agenda Item number on which you wish to comment. All presentations and discussions should be directed to the city council and all questions to the mayor. Any complaints and/or discussion about individuals, personnel, council members, city staff, or other persons would be out of order and will not be heard by the city council at this time. Charges or complaints about specific individuals shall be presented in writing to the city manager. All complaints of this nature must be signed and dated by the individual filing the complaint and will be addressed pursuant to Alice Personnel Policies. Please approach the speaker's stand, state your full name and address when you begin your remark, so that the official minutes will record your appearance before the city council. If you have written notes you wish to present to the mayor and council, please furnish an extra copy to the city clerk for official files. Please direct your comments to the mayor and council. Although council cannot take specific action on citizens' comment topics due to legal requirements, they will hear the topic, and council may have the item placed on a future agenda for action, or to refer to the, refer the item to the board, commission, or committee, or refer the item to staff or study or conclusion. Thank you for your cooperation. At this time, we'll hear from Ms. Kennimer. Good evening.
My name is Sherilyn Kennimer. I am new to the area. Was here in the late 60s. I'm here to represent myself and my husband, Jack Kennimer, whom you probably all know. We are concerned citizens, and my husband is a businessman here in Alice for many, many years. And I would like to thank everyone for everything you're trying to do. I know the times are bad, and it's trying, but we do thank you for that. Every family that comes to Alice, you know, they all have a dream. They want a home, they want a good education for their kids. And we're seeing that when they come and they want to buy a home, the first thing they're saying is, "How bad are the taxes?" We hear, "It's terrible." Well, what do you say? You know, what do we say? There's people leaving. There's people going to buy in other cities. And it's, uh, it's depressing, because I'm sure all of you feel the same thing. I know we have driven the big businesses away. I wish somehow we could bring them back. You know, they have lost our trust, and I don't know how you bring that back, how you get them to trust us again. I don't know. I feel that taxing us more and more is not the real answer. It's a quick fix. It's going to be every year. We need money. Where do we get it? We get it from everyone. And every time we vote, we're voting to spend taxpayers' money. And it's not just out there, like you say, "We're just going to tax everybody." It's your neighbor. It's your church affiliation members. It's your schoolteachers. It's your business people. So every vote, every dollar you spend is everyone here in Alice. And people are having a hard time with jobs, as we know. They're, it's depressing. I don't know what the answer is. I wish I was intelligent enough to have an answer, but we've got to do something different. If not, what are we going to do? I worry about the streets in Alice. As you drive down the streets, they're horrible. But if we keep taxing the people, we don't have to worry about the streets. There will not be anyone here to drive on those streets. And I just ask that you really consider, take your thoughts, think about it. We cannot drive these people away, and that's what is going to happen. I, uh, I know the, the new swimming pool is a sensitive, sensitive subject, but everyone wants a nice place for their children to go to. But not, these families can't afford to go to this pool. I mean, I don't know what the answer is there either, but we need to consider what raising taxes on our residents is going to do. It's going to drive our people away. And there's people wanting to stay here. They're working less hours for less pay. So I do thank you and hope that you will keep in mind all of these people, your neighbors, and everyone here in Alice. Alice is a good town. I'm back. I'm back because I've always liked Alice. But I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, there are no additional comments, so we'll listen to public announcements from council. Ms. Moran, you have any announcements?
Yes, I'd just like to remind the public that there is going to be an anti-bullying event that's taking place at the Alice baseball field on August the 25th. And if possible, I'd like to see some of the city officials out there taking part. Also, I visited with our police chief about participating, because, you know, bullying has become a very real concern, not only for the city of Alice, our community, but also throughout the nation. And we see children taking their lives because they've been bullied on social media, and we need to take a stand. We, as leaders, need to take a stand and show that there are consequences to bullying, that adults also have consequences to bullying on social media and in other media sources. So I encourage everyone to go out and participate and be a part of this, and be cognizant of the fact that children learn from the examples that adults set. And we need to be mindful that when we are encouraging bullying, we are setting the example for our children. Thank you.
And the date's on the 23rd.
Oh, is it on the 23rd?
It's on the 23rd. It's, it's Wednesday, the 23rd, at 5:00 it begins. And it's at the, um, the other field, not the baseball, but the other one where the cancer walk happened, the practice fields, the football practice fields. Thank you, Ms. Moran. Mr. Crisp?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Ms. Garza? Ms. Garza, nothing. Very good. I just want to tell everybody, thank you for being with us, and I wasn't here last meeting, and I missed y'all, but Mr. Crisp and I went to the TML conference in San Antonio, where we were able to network with other mayors and council and learn some valuable, valuable information. So it was, I'm sure Mr. Crisp feels the same way. It was very valuable. Thank you all for allowing us to attend that. Okay. At this time, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Presentation of information regarding taxes assessed and collected, including but not limited to tax rates, assessment, property values, exemptions, collections, and any other issues related to taxes by the city of Alice for fiscal year 2017 and fiscal year 2018. Discussion and deliberation regarding the information received, and consider and take any possible action upon information received.
Mayor and council, this evening, we have Mr. Sidney Vella in the audience, who's going to be reviewing with you guys the taxable assessed values for this year. After his presentation, Mr. Rogen Ramos from the Finance Department has a slide presentation for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for inviting me.
Good evening, Mr. Sidney.
Vanessa's passing out some information that I'm going to be discussing with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just to provide you some information on the current tax base for the city of Alice, and also some information with regard to the history of the tax base for the city of The first page you see on that handout, that's a spreadsheet of the certified values for 2017 as compared to the certified values for the city of Alice for 2016. The first column is for the real estate, which is land and buildings, any structures that are located on the real estate. Overall, there was a decrease of a little over $2.5 million from that value from last year to this year. The next figure you see is for commercial, personal property. Now, this is for the local businesses, the personal property that's used to produce income. It also includes a lot of leasing companies, leased vehicles, things of that nature. These are Walmart, HEB, the restaurants, convenience stores, but as I said, a big chunk is made up of leasing companies. So there was a pretty significant loss from last year to this year of a little over $14.5 million in value. The next figure you see is the value for industrial personal property. Now, that's heavy machinery, heavy equipment, drilling rigs, pipelines, utility companies, things of that nature. We use an outside contracted appraisal firm that specializes in valuing these type of items, so, and there was a significant loss in that, as you can see, as well, some $47 million overall. There are no mineral values within the city of Alice because there is no drilling inside the city, inside the city limits. When you add all these together, that's your total market values, the figure you see there in black. Everything you see in red to the right of that, that's a decrease to the market value. The first one is a decrease because properties that are being assessed for agricultural value as opposed to market value. Agricultural value is based on its productivity, how much it produces as opposed to per acre as opposed to how much it would sell per acre. And generally, the productivity value is about a fifth or a sixth of what the market value would be. So the difference between the market value and the taxable ag value is shown there is a loss. And you can see from one year to the next what the loss has been. The next item you see, this is an item for, it's a 10% homestead limitation. There's a law that was passed several years ago that if a property's value increases a homestead from one year to the next, even if it increased by, say, 15%, we can only increase the appraisal for taxable purposes by 10% because that's the limitation that's set by law, 10% per year. So the amount of value that's not being able to be assessed for the current year is shown there is a loss. In this case, it's a little more than half a million dollars. The next figure you see is any loss because of homestead exemptions. Currently, the city of Alice does not provide for a general homestead exemption, which would apply to anyone of any age. Typically, the school districts are the ones who offer that, and that's because they're state mandated that they have to do that. The next thing you see is the over 65 homestead exemptions. Now, this, the city does offer. It's for people who are 65 years of age or older, and it applies only to their homestead. It's a $10,000 reduction in value from the market value of the property. And as you can see, those figures have been increasing. A lot of that has to do with the fact population is getting older, and more people are qualifying for that exemption every year. The next figure you see is exemptions for people that are disabled. Now, the dollar amount of the exemption, whether you're disabled or over 65, is the same. It's $10,000. You can only get one or the other. You can't get them both. Typically, people that are under 65 years of age would apply for just the general disability one. Once they turn 65, they generally switch over to the over 65 because there's some added tax benefits for school districts for applying for the over 65 exemption. The next exemption you see there are veterans exemptions, and these are for people who have disabilities that were incurred while in active service with the armed forces. And that will range depending on their percentage of disability. It ranges anywhere from $5,000 off the value of their property up to $12,000, again, depending on their percentage of disability, and that disability rating is determined by the Veterans Administration. They would provide us documentation as to what their percentage of disability is. Now, in addition to that general exemption for people that are veterans, if you are a veteran and were disabled while in active service in the armed forces, and if you are 100% disabled, then you get 100% exemption from your homestead. In addition to that, you can still get the percentage exemption on a different property. The veterans exemption is the only exemption that can be applied to any property you own, whether it's mineral, personal property, commercial, it can be rental property that you own. But the 100% exemption for veterans can only be applied to their homestead and to no other property. And again, the difference between the loss in value because of that exemption is shown in red, because it's a loss from the total taxable value that you see before you. Freeport exemptions, that's currently, the city doesn't offer freeport exemption. Freeport exemption, it's a strange law. It has to do mainly with items of inventory that are brought into the state of Texas from outside the state of Texas. They have to be here for less than 175 days for either storage, assembly, or processing, and then, at the end of the 175 days, they have to be shipped back out of the state of Texas. And if a company meets all that criteria and submit the right paperwork, they can receive freeport exemptions. But as I said, the city of Alice doesn't offer that. The county does, the water authorities do, but the city currently does not. The next thing you see here are exemptions for pollution control items. This is another new exemption that got created a while back. That has to do with mainly personal property items that are used commercially, and they have a benefit of some sort of pollution control. A lot of the companies that have, the oil companies that use fracking, and they have recirculation equipment, that recirculation equipment, because it's a recirculating water and reusing it, that's considered pollution control. Also, for some companies, the oil companies on the drilling rigs blowout preventers that have been used for many, many years to keep their product from spilling out, and so they don't lose money. But those blowout preventers also have a benefit that they don't pollute the earth, so the value of those blowout preventers, again, are exempted as well. Some of these companies that have these rigs stacked in their yards that are inside the city, even though they're stacked, they're still can qualify for some of those exemptions. So the value lost there between the market value of the property and that exemption is pollution control. And that determination is made by the TCEQ. That's not a determination that we make. The companies have to file the correct paperwork with the TCEQ. They make the determination. They send us a letter telling us whether that item of equipment meets that criteria or not. If it does, we have to provide that, for that exemption. We don't have a choice. Once you subtract everything in red, what you have left is your net taxable value. That's your taxable value that you can assess a tax against to generate a levy. And as you can see, from last year to this year, there was a loss of $64,627,310 in value. Now, in actual money to the city at a tax rate of 53 cents, that translates to 342,525 actual tax dollars to the city of Alice, based on that 53 cent rate. So this is what it's been like, like I said, from 2016 to 2017. If you flip to the next page, this is a historical information from 1981 up through the present of what those values have been. The appraisal district was first opened up in 1981, and I've been with the appraisal district, as well as three other people at my office, since the day that it opened, some 36 years. So we've seen all these changes, and you can see over the years how values have changed between real estate, personal property, the various exemptions, and so forth. On the far right-hand side, in blue, you're going to see a percentage increase or decrease. That's the percentage increase in, or decrease in the levy from the year before. So if you look at 2017, it's a loss of 7.43% from the year before. If you look at 2016, it was a loss of 26.64% of the tax base from the year before that, and so forth and so on. Now, during the heyday, when our tax base was over $1 billion, that was kind of the beginning of the boom in the Eagle Ford shale area, and you can reflect that in the values that we've had. And then around, in 2015, I want to say 20, yeah, 2015 is when they started declining, and they've been steadily declining ever since then. But this kind of gives you an overview. Now, I've also written out on the next page after that, this is the narrative that just explains everything that I've just told you about each of the different columns, in case you want to go back and look at it a little more in depth later. This will give you some information as to what each of those columns represent. And then, let's see. Next, after that, this is a history of what the tax rates for the city of Alice have been from 1981 through 2016, because you haven't set the 2017s yet, but you can see the breakdown between maintenance and operation and the overall tax rates. So these are what your tax rates have actually been over the years. And again, that's just for informational purposes, and you can see with the fluctuations, when economy was good, the tax rates were low, and the economy was not as good, the tax rates were higher. And a lot of this has to also do with the half-cent sales tax that the city levies. That money is used directly to lower property taxes. So when the half-cent sales tax revenues that the city was receiving was very high, the city was required to lower those tax rates because that's what that money was specifically used for. When it was voted on by the public and adopted as a tax to be levied on sales, the money was to be used directly to offset property taxes. And that's been great as long as the sales tax revenues were high, but once the sales tax revenues start declining, then the local property tax rates would have to go back up to make up for the difference, just to keep the same amount, you know, not to generate more money, but just to be able to generate the same amount of money of what you had before. On the last page of that handout, this is what's called the effective tax rate calculation that I worked up for the city of Alice for this year, and it's based on the taxable values that the city has for this year. It's also based on their debt service for this year, which the city provides me that information so that I can include in the calculations. And this kind of gives you a little more information. It tells you what the effective tax rate is for this year. Now, the effective tax rate, that is a tax rate that will simply generate the same amount of revenue that you had generated last year from properties on the tax roll this year, but only for the same properties that are being taxed in both years. So it doesn't include any new properties, and it doesn't remove any properties that were here last year that are not here this year. So that's what an effective rate is. It's, it's just, you know, a rate that will kind of give you an idea as to what rate would it take to apply to the current year's tax base just to be able to generate the same amount of money you had before. And depending on what your budget is, if you need less money than that, then you could lower the tax rate. If you need more money than that, then you would have to raise the tax rate. When it comes to property tax issues, you really only have three choices. You either have to raise taxes, you have to cut expenses, or you do a combination of the two. And as I said, this kind of gives you a little more information. It'll tell you, for example, let me see where the effective rate is. This year's effective tax rate, which is right around the middle of the page, it's Now, again, your current rate is 53 cents, but because of the loss of the tax base and because of the loss in sales tax revenue from last year to this year, it would take a rate of .577 just to stay the same as what you generated last year. Now, the law does also allow you to increase up to 8% above your operating tax rate, which is your M&amp;O tax rate. All tax rates are made up of maintenance and operation, and then INS, which is your interest in shrinking, to pay off your bonded indebtedness. Your debt rate for this year, toward the bottom of the page, it's .224120. So that's the minimum amount that it would take against the tax base that you have right now to be able to generate enough money to pay your debt service for the next year. And then, as you see where it says your sales tax adjustment rate, that .21, that's the amount of tax dollars, or tax rate, excuse me, that you're able to decrease because of the money that you're receiving from the half-cent sales tax. If you didn't levy that half-cent sales tax, your tax rate would be 21 cents higher than what it currently is. So the current rollback rate, the rollback rate, that is the highest rate that you can adopt for the 2017 year that would encompass your debt service rate plus 8% above your maintenance and operating rate, which would be .599451. Again, that's your rollback rate. What that means is if you adopted a rate higher than that, total tax rate higher than that, then there could be an election held to roll it back to the rollback rate. But even if it was held, it would be that rollback rate. Okay? Now, if you're going to adopt a, or consider adopting a rate above the effective rate, you'd have to hold two public hearings and publicize two quarter-page ads before you can actually adopt the rate. If you're going to be adopting only the effective tax rate or anything below the effective tax rate, you can do that at any public meeting where you post the 72-hour notice. You don't have to have any special public hearings or any special quarter-page ads that have to be published. Do any of the council members have any questions over anything that I've gone over? I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you, and you may need a little time to absorb it, so if at a later date you have additional questions, just feel free to call me at my office. I'm always available, and I have spoken to many, many elected officials over the years and tried to provide this kind of information.
Counsel, any questions, Ms. Moran?
Can you go over again the sales tax adjustment rate and explain that again?
Okay. The city, as I said, you have a total sales tax of 1.5 cents. Okay? One-third of that, or a half-cent of that, is specifically used to lower your property tax rate. So monies that are generated from that half-cent of the total sales tax has to be put into the calculation to decrease what would have been the tax rate for this year, or what would be the tax rate for this year. And in this case, based on the sales that occurred previously, it's a little over 21 cents. So that's why the rollback rate, which would have normally been 81 cents, is reduced to 59 cents because of that sales tax adjustment rate. And as I said, had you not levied that half-cent sales tax, the local property tax would be 21 cents higher than what it currently is. And so as times are good and that sales tax adjustment rate increases, then your effective rate would decrease. As your tax base grows and your sales tax revenue grows, your effective rate comes down because every year, the effective rate is calculating based on the current year's taxable base and the current year's sales tax revenue, how much money, or how much of a tax rate is needed to generate the same amount of money as the year before. The problem with that is that as time goes on, expenses go up, you know, material costs go up, labor costs go up, insurance costs go up. go up, labor costs go up, insurance costs go up, other goods and services go up, so it's, it's hard to keep up with that just with the effective rate. But, I mean, that's a determination that you all have to make.
Ms. Moran, any other questions?
None.
Mr. Crisp?
No, thank you.
Ms. Garza?
No.
Ms. Gaddasco?
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, and if you ever need me again to come, just let me know. I'll probably be here again when you actually adopt your tax rates and provide some additional information. And I believe Mr. Ramos has some additional information that he wanted to share with you with regard to this agenda item as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bella.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm not too sure there's much more to share, he did such a good job. Thank you.
And hopefully with that information that Mr. Bella provided, it gave you a good idea on how the assessed value is, is determined every year. Before I go into my presentation, I wanted to go over a few definitions, and I think Mr. Bella already covered some of them. But you hear the, this over and over again in the budget process and so forth, so, and you're going to hear it again in, in the tax rate process too, so I figured I would go over. The first one is fund balance, which basically, what we have here is you take the, this is how you, you calculate, you take the beginning fund balance from the previous year, which is just your ending current assets minus your current liabilities, and then you add your current year's revenues, you subtract your current year expenses, and that gives you the projected ending fund balance. Your property tax rate is divided in two, like Mr. Bella mentioned. You have the INS, which is your debt service portion, and then you have the MNO, which is for the maintenance and operations. The effective tax rate, as he mentioned also, gives you the same dollar amount as the previous year, and the rollback rate is basically eight percent above the effective tax rate. He gave a much better definition, but that's just the general definition. On the following page, I have a few points to consider. In the proposed budget, we have a deficit right now in the general fund of 762,376. Now, we use, the proposed tax rate that was used in the 2018 proposed budget was .577, which these is the equivalent of the effective tax rate. There are no capital improvement projects in the budget currently. Anything that's in there is just for repair and maintenance, patchwork or whatever, there's no capital improvements. And tonight, we are not adopting the tax rate. I want to make that very clear. We're not adopting the tax rate. What we're asking for is the first record vote, and that's solely for the purpose of publishing the rate and holding two public hearings if, if, if it's the equivalent of the effective rate or higher, before another record vote is taken to actually adopt the rate. So, in essence, what we're saying here is if, if the effective rate, as I think Mr. Bella alluded to this also, if the effect, if what the proposed rate is equal to the effective rate or less, we don't need the two public hearings. If it's greater than the effective rate, then we will need the two public hearings along with the two quarter-page ads. And by city charter, we must adopt the budget no later than September 15th, so that's the target date. On the following page, or slide, if you can, as you can see, the total assessed value for 2017 is 804,744,695. That's a decrease of 700, 7.43 percent from the prior year. Now, a one penny increase or decreases, or one penny raises exactly $80,474 in taxes. So what exactly does that mean? So in other words, if we were to go from .577 and increase it to .58, then the deficit that we have of the 762, what, you have to add 80,474 to that. And actually, that, and that scenario, that decreases the deficit. So if you, if you go up, you decrease the deficit. If you go down, then you're going to increase the deficit by 80,474. And also, what I want to point out on this slide is if you can see from 2014, where our assessed value was 1.3 billion dollars, and 2015, it was 1 point, almost 2 billion, and 2016, it went down to 869 million. And for the, the same years, it raised revenues of 1.8 million, 1.1 million almost, and 2.6 million. But the decline from 2014, if you take that 1.3 billion and you subtract this year's 804, assessed value of 804 million, that's a, a decrease of almost half a billion in assessed. It's equal to 516,366,977. That's, that's a substantial amount.
Say that again, please.
It's equal to 516,366,977. And of course, that's no fault of anybody in this room. I mean, it's just economics and what's happened in the, with the oilfield industry and so The following slide. In 2016, total assessed value, as we mentioned, was 869 million. In 2017, it went down to 804 million, so that's a decrease of 7.43. Now, as Mr. Bella mentioned, the sales tax is a critical component of this also. So since the sales tax has gone down along with the property assessed value, then what ends up happening is that your effective tax rate has to go up. Sorry, what? The sales tax?
And the values were due.
Yeah. The, the sales tax has decreased along with the property tax. If the sales tax would have increased, then we would have balanced off a little bit easier, but since they both are in the decline, that makes it so much more difficult. So the proposed tax rate, this is what the, the value of this year of 804 million. We had, and our effective rate, where, like I mentioned, we're at a loss of 762,376,000. Now, if you go down to the, and that would, those are revenues of 2,839,799, if you can see at the top of the graph. If you drop down to the .53, which was last year's rate, then you're decre, you're increasing our general fund balance deficit to 1.1 million. If you increase it to, say, the rollback rate, a .599, that'll give you revenues of 3 million, and you're actually decreasing your deficit to 581 million. So that's, that's the, the balancing that I was mentioning to you guys. Now, for the, for the general fund, basically what it does, and the proposed ending fund balance for the general fund, we are projecting with the effective rate of 1, 1,999,022, which will cover only less than two months of operating expenses. Now, if we keep that trend going into 2019, then it's only going to cover a little over than one month of operating expenses. So this, this trend is not sustainable. We cannot continue that way. Basically, we're just one disaster away from being in a financial bind, whether it be hurricane, whatever it may be, we just, it'd be very difficult to sustain that. So on this slide, basically, how does this affect the residents of the City of Alice? I mean, I know we have an audience here, they want to know, how does this affect us? If you own a home, this is worst-case scenario, going all the way to the rollback rate. If you own a home that's worth $150,000, that's an increase of $104 for the whole year. So that's basically $80.66 per month. On the, on the other side of it, if you own a 50,000, a home that's worth 50,000, and we go with the effective rate of .577, then that's a $24 increase for the whole year. That's basically $2 per month. What, what this is taking into consideration is from the .53, that we're going up to the In the middle, you have $100,000 home. At the effective rate, it'd be a $47 increase. At the rollback rate, it'd be a $69 increase for the year. So where does exact, where exactly does your tax dollar go? Well, here's a breakdown of the 2016 total tax for an Alice resident. We're right in the middle at the 19 percent. The 6 percent is Alice Water Authority, and the 4 percent is the Jim Wells County Lateral Road. The 24 percent is Jim Wells County General Fund, and the, the biggest chunk is, of 48 percent, is your Alice Independence School District. So basically, this, the city staff is proposing two options. To approve by record vote, a proposed rate increase to the effective rate, which is the .577, and this still gives us a general fund balance deficit of 762,376, which we still have to work on cutting that. If we approve by record vote, a proposed rate increase to the rollback of the 5.999451, this will give us a general fund balance deficit of 581,719. Now, the, the rollback rate is the highest that we can do without having to go through an election, just like Mr. Bella mentioned that. Now, a record vote would be needed to pu, we would need to publish in the newspaper and along with the two quarter-page ads. So why should we do the, why should we approve either the effective or the rollback rate? Well, posting at the highest tax rate means essentially that the city could adopt something lower than that. Once we go through the budget process, we could, but nothing higher than that rate that was recorded today. So either way, we have two budget workshops that are scheduled, and, and I know that the council and the public and everyone will have input, and we can do the best that we can, and I'm more sure everybody will do their due diligence and try to decrease it. But for the purpose of tonight is just to record the vote at that rate, which we cannot exceed, and the adoption of the rate. So that concludes my portion of presentation. If you have any questions.
Ms. Gaddasco, you have any questions?
I wanted to, I think I had anyone. Mr. Ramos, on slide number eight, would you take us through the math, please, on how the annual increase is calculated? For example, on the $50,000 home, at the .577002, you have $24. Could you walk us through that math, please, for the benefit of the council?
Do you mind if I do the 100,000, because that, I can do that one from the top of my head a lot easier.
That's easier, it's an easier number, yes, sir.
Last year, at the .53, at the .530, if you think about it, was at 100,000, it was $530 for the year. So this year, we're proposing the 57702, so it'd be $577 for the year. So it's a difference of $47.
I thought you had said, I'm sorry, mayor, may.
Go ahead.
On the, the scenario, it's $47 on here, but that's, that's what it would increase by. Hold on, because now I'm lost now.
Per month, right?
Because if we do the 50,000, divided by the 100, it gives us 500, and then multiply that by, let's, let's say the 59, that gives us 295, divided by the 12 is the 24.5, so that's what it would be monthly, not annually. Correct?
On the 50,000?
Yeah.
But your total payment?
The total.
He's, he's just reporting the increase.
And the increase.
Yeah, so this, this $47 is what you're saying. That's all, that's the differential that they'll see.
Between the 5.3 to the 5.7.
Okay.
So that's just the increase, that's the differential.
Add it to.
Yes.
I was trying to put it in, in a way to where you can relate a little bit easier, because it sounds like a significant amount.
Right.
But then, when you start putting it in, in layman's terms like this, it kind of, you can get a better grasp as far as what it actually.
So someone with $100,000 assessed home value, their payment, tax payment would increase by $47.
That's correct.
Monthly?
No.
Yearly.
For the year.
Yearly.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddasco, any other questions? Ms. Garza?
No.
Mr. Crisp?
Not at this time.
Ms. Moran?
These numbers that we looked at to come up with the, the deficit, I believe you said 762,376?
That's correct.
And then, can you give me the total budget that we need to operate? What is the, the number that we need for 2018, including the INS and the MNO?
I couldn't give you that from the top of my head.
Okay.
I don't know if we have a budget.
And the recent, oh, yeah.
I think it was 11. something million on the general fund, and I think total, including debt service and including all of them, was like 23 million, including hotel motel debt service and so forth. I believe it was like 23 million, but somewhere around there. I think Vanessa can get you the exact amounts. For the general fund by itself, it was like 11.8 million, I want to say.
And in layman's terms, so that, you know, those of you who are watching, the effective tax rate of .577 would give us the numbers that we need for the 2018 total budget? Or are we still going to be?
We're still be, we will still be in a deficit of the 762.
Now, these numbers, the 11 million, more or less, for the general fund and for the INS, you said was what?
The general fund?
Was 11 million and then?
Oh, the, that's, that's the total, but she can, Vanessa can get you the exact amount, but I believe that, from the top of my head, I believe it was like 11. something million for the general fund, and the total was like 23 million or?
You want just the expenses or total?
No, I think the total number.
The one that gives you the deficit of 762?
You want just the deficit amount?
Yes.
762,000.
No, no, I have.
You have the revenues and expenses that give you that deficit amount?
The revenue was 11,368,380. The expenses are at 12,130,756.
Let's talk about the expenses of 12 million. This is for 2018?
Yes, ma'am.
How much have we done to whittle that number down in terms of the city taking responsibility to bring this number down?
Ms. Lopez, do you want to answer that question?
Mrs. Moran, if I can?
Sure.
Interject for a moment. I understand where you're coming from, and, and the deficit in the general fund is concerning. If you'll step back a little bit in time to when the budget was presented to you all, the first thing I want to point out is that consolidated, the general fund and the other enterprise funds combined are giving us a ballots budget with the effective tax rate. The budget, as it was presented to you all, did have, on the far right-hand corners, the dollar changes. There has been a lot There has been a lot of input from staff, and as we work through our budget workshops, it'd probably be a better venue for staff to be prepared to answer in-depth those types of questions, and also give comparisons to prior years. Right now, we've gone back and looked from 2005 forward to determine expenses today compared to expenses in '05, and most departments are actually below expenditures on fiscal year '05.
Do you know more or less what that percentage is, that each department has?
I don't have a percentage change. We have dollar changes in your proposed budget for each line item. We can be ready with that information at the workshops.
Okay. I'd like to, to get an idea of what each department, a percentage that they have looked at in cutting back was, were, were they asked to look at their budget and given a certain percentage to cut back?
The, the format for budgeting was several different ways. Some of them used a zero-balance budget, you know, what do I need above zero to operate?
Right.
But the majority of the expenses that are in the budget right now are just to operate and for basic needs. As Mr. Ramos mentioned before, there are several capital improvement projects that are not funded, so you have a bare-bones balance budget based on the effective tax rate.
And, and I guess I'm asking these questions because when we get to Agenda Item Number Five, I, I just feel that I don't have enough information at this time, so I will, I will reserve my questions for when we get to that Agenda Item.
And as we, as they mentioned before, tonight, you're not adopting a tax rate. We're looking at the proposed, which is the highest rate that we will use as we work through budget workshops and continue to whittle through the budget, take council's recommendations, continue to look at fee increases for revenues and more expenditure cuts.
I, I guess I'm having a hard time trying to explain that to the layman, in layman's terms, about Agenda Item Number Five. I mean?
Well, and, 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 Councilwoman, that, that, the, all you do tonight is you just set the proposed rate.
Okay.
And that proposed rate is what they have to work with when they finalize the budget for our budget workshops, and that sets, suppose, let's say, the field that we're playing on.
Okay.
If we're playing on a scrimmage, and we're playing between the 50-yard line and the goal line practicing, then that's where we're at, and that's how the proposed tax rate comes. Now, you all can, as Mr. Vella said, as our finance director has said, as Diana has said, is that you guys can go below that, if you would like, and, but that's a starting point, and what they're suggesting is to set it either at the effective rate or the rollback rate, and you guys get to decide what that is. And from there, if there's adjustments that are made that can, that can continue a balanced budget, budget at your all's budget workshops, and you're going to be able to reduce that rate, wonderful. Okay? And so that's, that's where you guys are at right now. It's not set in stone.
I see exactly what she's saying, because tonight, we proposed something, and then, like, what I see is time wasted. So say we propose this, really not a real number, is what we're saying, and, you know, staff goes and does all of this work, spends hours and hours and hours doing all of this work, and then we go back and say, okay, never mind, we don't want to do that. So now, you guys have to go back and redo all of that, so would we?
And that's the process. That's the process, is for them to be able to comply with Chapter 26 of our tax code, that they have to come out and they do this, and this allows them to go ahead and work the budget for your all's budget presentation and workshop on those numbers. If you all are able to adjust the budget in a fashion that they can reduce the rate that's acceptable, then they just come back in, and as long as it's lower than the effective rate, you're good. You don't have to come back and have a public hearing. And so, this is just part of the process of moving forward, and it needs to be done as soon as possible, because I think you have to have your rate set by the, September the 20th?
By September 15.
Well, before we adopt the budget. Before we adopt the budget.
Or the adoption of the budget.
I, I think by law, it's by September 30th.
There are legal requirements in local government code, as well as our chapter, that determine when those hearings have to be scheduled, how far apart they have to be scheduled, and how soon before the budget is adopted that they have to be scheduled. So that's why this item is being brought to you all this evening.
So it, it might be a waste of time, but we got to do it.
Right. But I guess just for constituents and citizens to understand that it's not a real number, in layman's terms.
It is a proposed tax rate.
Proposed tax rate.
The thing to remember, most importantly, is once it is proposed, we cannot go above it.
So it's the highest allowable?
Correct.
That we would go?
Yes. You can go below it, but not above it.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Moran?
No, I'll reserve them for Agenda Item Number Five.
Mr. Crisp? No, Ms. Garza?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
No.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, at this time, we're going to take this to the table, because our presenter is not able to be with us today, so we'll take it to the table.
We can, we can table the item, and we will be bringing back Ms. Entrickin at one of the budget workshops. She had a scheduling conflict and wasn't able to make it here this evening on time.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, consider, discuss, and act upon record vote for proposed tax increase, and consider and act upon scheduling two public hearings and issuing and publishing notice of public hearing dates. Okay. So, here we are.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so Mr. Ramos and Mr. Vella have kind of given you some history. The recommendation from staff at this point, as, as you all know, in the proposed budget, the effective tax rate was used, which is set at .577002. The rollback rate, which is the highest rate that we can, we can go without an election, is at .599451. This is on the last page of the handout that Mr. Vella passed out to you all. What we are asking council to consider this evening is, first and foremost, setting the, at, at least a minimum, considering the effective rate to bring in the same amount of revenue. It's an increase of about four cents. The rollback rate is an increase of about six cents. And as Mr. Ramos pointed out, the effect to homeowners and citizens of the City of Alice is, the difference is on Slide Eight of the handouts that he gave you. If the council was to, this evening, determine that they would like to go with the effective rate of .577002, there would be no need for a record vote and no need for public hearings. If they determined they wanted to go something below that, there would be no need for a record vote and no need for public hearings. If the council determines that they want to go above the effective rate to the rollback rate or somewhere in between, we would need to have a record vote of council for the proposed tax rate, and we would need to schedule two public hearings and post those notices in the newspaper. And I'll be happy to answer any questions I can to the best of my ability.
Okay. Ms. Moran?
Okay. So, again, I mean, I understand what you're asking us to do, but I am having a difficult time making a decision to, to either recommend going with the effective tax rate, or something in between, or up to the .59 rollback before any of the public hearings and advertisements kick in. I've always been of the position that, in order to make an informed decision, I have to have all the scenarios in front of me, the what-ifs. Did we address the what-ifs? Did we look at certain areas within our, our departments? And did we run those numbers before coming up here? And did we do that when we were given the proposed budget? Because I, quite frankly, feel like we've got the cart before the horse. I don't feel that this proposed budget has some of the what-ifs. What if we did certain things? I understand that we are dealing with a deficit, and that has to do not because of the auditorium, not because we're, you know, looking at tax increases. It has to do with our economy. Since 2014, the writing was on the wall. Sales taxes were declining, property taxes were declining. There could have been decisions that could have been made, tax increases, maybe in increments, that wouldn't have impacted the taxpayers all at once like it did last year. I don't know that this proposed budget includes any of the what-if scenarios, and I know, Mr. Ramos, you and I sat down and discussed with staff as well, and this is not something new that cities don't do. They run what-if scenarios. What if we did this with these departments? What if we did that? Then come back with the budget. Because then, I feel I have more information to make an informed decision, because, believe me, any tax increase will impact our citizens. And that is a real concern to me. As a business owner, not on, not only as a homeowner, a business owner, we're getting, you know, businesses are leaving because they're getting impacted not only with some of the taxes that Mr. Vella addressed, the personal property taxes, the, you know, the real estate taxes. And my concern is, I want to have our businesses stay here. You only have to walk downtown at 2 o'clock on a Saturday and see most businesses are closed. You can drive by through Alice and see some of the businesses that are leaving. That is not acceptable. I am of the position that if we increase taxes, how are we going to bring back our economy? What businesses are going to want to come back and do business with the City of Alice when we keep increasing our tax base? So I still don't feel I have enough information. I would have liked to have seen or heard that the what-if scenarios were put into this proposed budget. I do understand what Ms. Diane is saying, that we will address those in budget workshops, but I want our citizens out there to know, and those that are here, that those are the things I am going to be looking for. That any tax increase would be the ultimate last alternative. I want to see some what-ifs from staff. I want to see the city and the city employees take responsibility. We've got great employees, and I know we can do this, because ultimately, it impacts all of us, and our ability to continue to move forward and bring back our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Mr. Crisp?
I'm of the same mind. Okay? I, I understand that staff has worked very hard on putting this budget together. It, it's, it's not an easy thing, by no means. We, we basically ask you to do the impossible and come up with a balanced budget when you really know there's no way to do it. And the idea of the effective tax rate truly is effective when used properly. However, saying that we're going to be using an effective tax rate this year isn't a proper use of it, in my opinion, because it was way overburdened. And by it, I mean, the City of Alice was way overburdened last year. So, yes, we have 10 people working at, or showing up, and it costs $100 to go into the country club. Next year, if we have nine people, it still costs $100. So they're only paying $1 more. Then you have eight people, and now it's $1,250 for each one of them, and it's only $2.50 more. Now, if you do it over a term, it doesn't hit you so hard. But if one year, it goes from 10 to three, you, you get hit pretty hard, and, and that's what we did last year. So asking, asking our, our citizens even for $47, that's a lot. You have a lot of fixed income out there. Then the county is going to come in and do the same thing. The Water District barely did anything last year because they knew that what, what everybody else was doing. The school didn't hit very hard because they knew what everybody else was doing. And, and it's hard for me to go in and say, hey, let's go for the max, when I don't even want to go for the minimum, because we haven't, again, again, I know y'all have worked your tails off to present us with this two-inch-thick, and I, I really think there, there's about, you know, 3 million individual numbers in there that we have to look over in about a week to get here today. And I, I just, I just can't see it, because $27, or $47 turns into $94, turns into $130, turns into another $200 on people with fixed incomes. So in my eyes, we really need to, and I know, again, I know that it's been done, but we really have to look deep with, with highlighters and big red pencils and go through this thing and, and skim where we can. When your customer can't afford to buy from you anymore, you don't increase the price. You have to figure out what services you actually need to offer, and that's what we need to do. We need to figure out, by going through here and cutting back where we can, what we need to cut back. And sometimes, like, like last year, it's hard cuts and it's hard decisions, but there's no way that, that, that the citizens out there can, can not expect us to do this, that, this year after what happened last year. So we're going to be looking hard, very hard, and, you know, some of those sessions might run long, but, you know, that, that's what I expect out of this deal, and I have a hard time. I, I understand where you're coming from with your recommendations. I just have a really hard time doing it to a customer base that had, that can't afford it, couldn't afford it last year. I mean, we're, we're down from, I want to say it was 95% collections to 92% collections, and that's just going to keep going up, so we're not actually going to win here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Ms. Garza?
I don't have anything to say. I just don't want a tax increase. We need to check every department and see where we can cut and, and go from there, because we cannot afford another tax hike.
Ms. Carrasco?
I don't think any of us want to see a tax increase, and I know our citizens, our constituents, don't want to see a tax increase. We're in a hard position right now, very hard position. It's not something that, that I feel we should burden our citizens with, with, there were poor decisions, not being proactive. So not being proactive, here we are now. Now we're, we're all burdened with making a hard decision, you know, and it's not fair that our citizens carry that burden. But we're here. We knew what we were going to have to face and, and the challenges we were going to have to face, and I know that our staff is going to have challenges to face also, and they, and I'm sure y'all have looked at this, and we're all going to have to work together to make this right for our citizens, and make our city grow and, and attract business to our city. Our city's a wonderful city, and I know we can get there again. It's just, we weren't proactive. So now we need to be proactive, and that falls on all our shoulders. And, and looking at this, I mean, we got to be realistic, you know, and, and really think about it and, and be proactive. Because if we, we say, you know, we can't, we can't go to the, the proposed, you know, the rollback tax, but yet, we know, we don't have any, any plans for our infrastructure. We're not going to hurt our citizens with not having good streets. How are we going to do that? We need to figure out how we're going to make that happen. So we're, it's a tough decision, and we're going to have to look at all that. When, when we look at this and decide, okay, we don't want to go to this because we don't want to burden our citizens. want to burden our citizens, but we don't want to go to the lower end either, because we don't want to affect them either, where we can't do anything. So we've got, it's a tough decision. And I'm going to do my, you know, I think we all need to work together and try to set something that is feasible, where our departments can go back and look at this and have room to work to where they can cut and where we can decide something where it's fair to all our constituents and our citizens, where they're not burdened with a tax increase, a big tax increase or anything.
Thank you. And I, I feel like the same thing in three months. I've worked closely with constituents and citizens. I have messages from, I can't pay my car, I can't buy food, I can't buy my prescriptions. $5 makes a difference to some people. $6, it does make a difference to some people. I feel that the last, and I don't like going back in time, but we're not going to look back, we're going to look forward, and we're going to look at, do our citizens deserve with the streets that we have, with the water quality we have, with those things that we don't have money to do? We understand that. As a council, we understand that. Gosh, but at this time, if we did anything over what we're currently doing, is a slap in the face to our taxpayers. And I just feel that our, our staff is awesome and amazing, and I know we're asking you to be magicians, but I know for a fact that revenues have not been taken into account correctly. They have not been processed correctly. I have seen that we don't accept payments correctly. Rent goes without being paid to the city. I could go on and on and on with those deficiencies. And it's not to blame anybody, it's just to point out the fact that there's a lot of monies that should have been collected that you guys was not collected. So I can't sit here and say, yeah, we're going up, because I don't think the jobs were done efficiently. Not to blame anybody. I think from here forward, there are solutions, not, not talking about problems, but solutions to those problems. And this council has talked about things that we could do to collect correctly. So I'm with council. We, I do not feel that we can at all go up. I feel that we're going to have to work hard through budget processes and, and work with city staff. And I know we're not operational, this is not our job to do operations, but I know that everybody sitting here would not mind writing ideas and giving to you guys to take back to the table, because all of us have great ideas to give back to the city, even though we're not supposed to do operation. But at this time, I would beg that y'all allow us to help with, with ideas, even not to do, but with ideas. For, for, if anything, revenue, how to collect. We've got to collect. And there's a lot of little things as a city that we don't collect. And if that means you're going to have to go to Anderson Park and, and pay for that pavilion, I'm sure our citizens would agree that that's okay. You know, we, we pay to go places. But I think as a whole, it would, it would be unfair to that elderly person that can't afford her medication, his medication. That's how I feel. So council, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Can I tell you just something, as far as legal goes? You guys can adopt the rate and not follow it. If you fail to adopt or propose, the proposed rate tonight, and then back up from that later or set it at a lower rate, if you fail to adopt the rate by the deadline, then it's set, it's realistically, or actually, it's going to be set at the rate we have right now. It's set at the lower of the, the effective rate or the rate that we had for the past year.
We could keep it the same, is what you're saying.
And so, and I think, just in regards to tonight, I think staff's just asking for some of the items so they can begin to finalize the budget for your all's workshop.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Council.
I guess my question is, if we, if we don't come up with a proposed rate, what happens?
Legally, if you take new action tonight, that just condenses what staff has to do and the timeframe that they have to, to, to deal with the rate, the proposed rate.
So it would stay the same?
Well, yes and no.
Why not? Because the proposed budget has the effective tax rate in it.
Correct. So y'all would have to go back and?
You would have to tell us where you want to set it, so that we can go back and readdress revenues and expenditures and everything else.
Which is that time-waste that I talked about, that I don't like.
Yes.
If it would have been done the same, we could have worked with the same.
And then we've worked from there.
And when we proposed the budget, I think it's important for council to understand that we didn't know what that rate was going to be. We were working off bringing in the same amount of revenue, not necessarily what that would equate to, to a tax rate.
I guess this, again, in, in looking at these numbers, with this proposed effective tax rate that you're using, what are we really gaining? We're still going to be at 1.9, almost a month and a half of reserve funds. A good, healthy reserve fund should have three or more months. So next year, we're going to be right back doing the same thing again, asking our citizens for a tax increase. We're still going to be at a not healthy fund balance. And so we need to be proactive, we need to be visionaries, we need to look forward and ahead. How are we going to change these numbers? And if it means us, myself, and city employees taking a hard look at what needs to change and taking responsibility so that we don't burden our taxpayers, then that's what we'll do. Because these numbers aren't changing. Guys, we're going to be right back again next budget cycle.
Would you like to propose a motion?
I think.
Yes. Got willing, we're not in the same position, and that we do have key leaders in our city that know how to create revenue, bring in business, because we're not wanting to be stagnant. This council wants to move Alice forward. So bringing in new business is going to change. Where hopefully, got willing, we need to be proactive, bring in development. We're not going to be bringing in development if we don't do the basics for our citizens, for our, our business owners. You know, they need, they need us to have Alice be attractive, so they have customers, they have a client base. So we need to be proactive, bring in new business, and visit with our, our city manager that will bring in EDC and bring economic development. That's how we're going to move forward, not going to stay, I don't want to stay stagnant, and I don't want to burden our citizens with a, with another tax increase. So hopefully, got willing, we all will be the professionals and the proactive people we want to be and bring in some of these new business and revenues, so that we don't burden our citizens in the future.
Would you like to entertain a motion, Ms. Garosko? I think we all know where we stand, somebody just needs to say it.
If I could, I would. I think.
If there's, if there's a chance that you all might consider a number between the effective rate and where we're at, you probably need to go ahead and, and set up a proposed rate higher than what we have now, so that that's there. You all can always go lower than that, you all can even go lower than what the rate is now, based upon your budget workshops. As, you all most definitely are going to be able, through the city manager during those workshops, specifically question and line item things in each department in the budget and whatnot. By law, I think, Sidney, they have to, you guys have to have the value certified by the July 25th, something like that?
We certify the appraisal values by July 25th, but the city has to adopt a tax rate by September 15th, based on the city charter.
And the point that I'm trying to make is, they haven't had these all that long. And so that's another issue that people watching at home have to understand, that while we're frustrated, we want to try to get something done, they haven't had that data based upon statute.
The values were just certified mid-July.
But I think what council would, would have hoped is that we would have done it on the same that we were already at, because we knew that that's what we were already collecting. So I'll entertain a motion.
That's, that's, I'm going to analyze this again, guys. I'm saying, let's start at the beginning, where we're at with our current tax rate. Is that where we're going?
Your motion?
So, and let's, let's take a hard look at, I mean, they may or may not work, but let's start there. That's a starting point, so I make.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. And correct me if I'm wrong, by setting a proposed number, that, let's say we do the 53, and we do our budget workshops, and there's not a whole lot that we can change, we're stuck at that 53, that can't go back up. So we, we need to really evaluate this and think about it, because we can always go down. We can't go back up.
You can't go back up.
I'll entertain a motion.
You're saying if we?
She wants to go out. Stay at what they proposed.
What they proposed, but if we stay where we're at, we can't come back at one of the budget hearings, as long as we are within our timeframe, we can't change the rate?
The timeframe that would be happening for this is, we would need to schedule, it's the effect, now, if you're looking at only the effective rate, we're okay, because we won't need the public hearings and we won't need the ads in the newspaper, so there's no timing deadlines against it. Anything above that, the timing that comes into play in order for us to meet the statutory requirements, we would need to post the ad, get it to the newspaper by Friday. The first hearing would be August 24th, and then three to 14 days later is when we have the second hearing on August 31st. And that second hearing has to be 14 days before we adopt the budget, which is September 14th, which is why it's been brought to you all this evening.
I think what she was asking was, say if we do the, say if we did go with the .577, and, and we say, okay, that's what we do, and if we say, hey, we cut out this much, can we come back down before September 15?
When you, when you, when we adopt the tax rate, at that point is when you determine exactly what it's going to be. Yes, ma'am.
It's just that extra time that, that city staff will be doing it again and again. So right now, what's, what's said is .577 is the way y'all figured this proposed. So if we, if we, tonight said the proposed budget is .577002, then it's already done, the work's done, we go to the table, budget workshops, we cut, we slice, and then we can come back down to .5300.
You can go anywhere in between that. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely correct.
Absolutely.
So that's something to consider, I guess. And for our constituents to understand that it, that we're working with it, not taking it as that.
But it's, it's a proposed, it's not adopted. It's giving you all a starting number, and I want to see it worked down.
Correct.
And in essence, cutting time and, and money, because they're not going to have to go back and rework it to?
Whittling away at what we've proposed here.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. It's a good foundation.
The one thing, sorry.
No, you're fine.
The one thing that I would like is to see in the future is that we start working on this ahead of time and not wait, because it's unfair to council.
I think they were waiting on appraisal values from?
Well, there were, there were, there was a lot of, well, not the, not the certified numbers is what I'm, I'm talking about.
You're talking about the budget process itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Typically, most cities start their budget process soon after they get their audits. And the audit should be done 180 days after your fiscal year starts. October 1, you have 180 days to get that audit completed, so that we know what numbers we're working with. Then, then you start February, March, you start working on these budgets. Departments start getting out their, their budgets and stuff, and we start early, and we start having more meetings. We can then maybe perhaps include citizens to be part of the Budget Review Committee and get input from them. So something to think about for next year.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
I make a motion that we propose, that we, is it accept, the proposed tax rate of .577?
Just a, just a point of clarification, you wish to set, you wish to propose or move to set the proposed tax rate at the effective rate?
Effective.
As presented by council.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll vote on it?
Since it's at the effective rate, there's no need for a record vote, just a vote.
So all in favor of accepting the proposed effective tax rate for city staff to work on and whittle down in the next few weeks? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The mayor gets to vote here.
I knew I would. Nay. We need to work on it to keep it at the current effective tax rate.
Current tax rate.
At the current tax rate. At the current effective tax, or the current tax rate.
The actual.
What it currently is right now.
Yes, ma'am. You have to ask for another motion, mayor, because we have to have something proposed.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. So we need to now call the motion to say what we, what we need about.
Bite the bullet. Mayor, I make a motion that we set the proposed tax rate to the current tax rate.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Aye, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? So the majority, the majority carries, which, which means that we are going to adopt the proposed, or stay the same where it's at currently, which is a current tax rate of Sorry, city staff, but a little bit more work to do. Agenda item number six. The city council may enter into closed-door executive session pursuant to Government Code 551.071, private consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, a settlement offer, or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state or of Texas clearly conflicts with Texas government code 551, and specifically to receive an update and to secure legal advice and counsel from the attorney related to a pending legal matter, Christine Reyes versus City of Alice, Texas. The time is 7:58, and council will now go to executive session.